Is everybody ready? I don't want to start before. Last time I started, poor Chevelli was up at the back of the room and I asked her to. She had to come running down, so. We'll go ahead and call our study session to order. And this is, a study session's a lot less formal than a regular meeting. Please feel free to call each other by your first names. There's no, don't have to do the whole council member thing. It's meant to be much less formal so that we can have open conversations about items. And I will go ahead and, who's up first? Rob? Are you introducing this? Oh, you're not on yet, I don't think, unless the mic needs to be pulled up to your tall face.
Perfect. Thank you. Hello, Mayor and Council. I'll be quick in my introduction. I know we are, have a couple of things to discuss and limited on time. So, tonight is an opportunity, obviously, we've seen a lot of transition on council over the past less than a year. So, as part of that, we tried to further develop and refine an orientation program and also have discussions with you guys about, you know, what could have been most effective in helping you to kind of understand your role and your responsibility and us to support you. So, tonight's really just an opportunity to review some of those things, some of the items that we want to make sure and kind of introduce as you all come on council and make sure that you understand as far as the roles and responsibility of a council member. As we know, local government's kind of different, a different animal to a lot of things, so it's, so a lot of people don't understand exactly what that looks like. And then also, what some of those items were that came out of the orientation and the discussion with you all, how we've been able to kind of incorporate those and how we're going to continue to do that and ways that we're able to kind of better, better support you in, not only in the transition to a council seat, but, you know, as, the years ahead as you, as you serve on council, making sure we support you in ways that we can. So, with that, I think Chris kicks it off here. All right. Do you want this? I don't know.
Wherever you would like. If you want to stay right there, that's fine. Okay. We're used to talking to you while you're sitting right there, so.
Yeah, exactly. I've never stood up there. Anyway, so the first, the first thing we're going to go over is the mayor's authority. This authority's found in both state statute as well as our town code. And there's one reference in our land development code that I'll refer to. So, you'll see on the next slide, there's a bunch of bullet points and I just kind of summarize what the mayor's authority is. If, if you're interested in knowing what the citations are, I have those. Didn't put them in there because it would have just really made it a lot more words than it already is. But as you see, the first one is to serve as the chief executive officer of the town. That's actually both in our code and in Title IX in our statute. And then, the next one is, you serve as a chair. The mayor serves as the chair, presides over the council meetings, we see that. And everything we say here that applies to the mayor, applies to the vice mayor if the mayor is not available. So, it automatically, these authorities automatically roll over. The mayor's not here at a meeting, or if the mayor's out of town, then the vice mayor, by code, would have these, would have these authorities as well. So, the next one, under the council chair and presiding over council meetings, I did sub-bullet points because all this authority kind of lies with what the mayor has, the authority the mayor has as the presiding authority at a public meeting or even an e-session. So, these are all different types of authorities that the mayor has. So, preserving order and decorum, you can assess a fine for disorderly conduct on council members, but it can't be more than $20 under our code. So, exactly. If a council member gets out of hand, you can warn them and if they refuse to, you can fine them $20. And, and your decision is final. That's what our code provides. It's an old code provision. But you can also limit comments, and this is actually in statute, that, in case law as well, that on the communications from citizens, really what comments they have should be something that can come before the council. So, if someone gets up here to talk about a federal issue that won't be here, you don't have to hear it. You can allow it if you want, but as the mayor, you can say, hey, you know, that's not in our jurisdiction, thank you, but sit down. Other authority is the chair of the meeting. When it comes to that is, if, if people get out of hand, you can warn them if they are, you know, using vulgarities and profanities and just, you know, kind of acting like they shouldn't act. In a council meeting, after warning, you can have them removed. You can order the, order the police to have them removed. And if they refuse, then they can be charged with disobeying lawful disorder or trespass. The one there, talking about making and seconding motions, we obviously see this. Some mayors don't have that authority under their code or under their charter. Our mayor does. You can make a motion, you vote. You're not just a tie vote, you are an actual one of the seven votes. And then you have the right to convene a council meeting and call special meetings on your own. Council members, they'll get into that on the council member authority. You can call meetings as well, but it takes three or sometimes four, depending on what type of meeting it is. The mayor has the right to do that on her own. Execute, authenticate documents. And then, obviously, we're all aware now of what the state authority is as well as our code, which parrots the state statute with the declaration of local emergencies and the broad authority that a mayor will have under those type of things. Of course, we know that that authority, statutory authority's being revisited, so we would probably bring a code change, we'll need to, if, if that authority is, the authority that's granted in the statute is somehow revised, our code will have to be updated to parrot that language. By code, you have to provide some type of annual state of community address. I think we do that every year, but that is actually in code. And then the last one is appointment and removal of redevelopment commission. Our code says that that's a mayor, a mayoral function. It's referred to in our code as well as the land development code, that the mayor, not the council, is the one that makes those appointments and also has the authority to remove. So, any questions about, about that?
We pretty much do that function as a whole body, so does that cover that?
It does, yeah. You could rule unilaterally if you want to, but I think traditionally, the town has always done the normal process that you do for any opening.
Thank you. Any other questions on this part? No? And feel free to ask questions as we're going along this evening.
The, just briefly, the authorities that apply to the mayor, running, you know, at a council meeting or an executive session, it applies to the planning commission chair as well. Those type of authorities about controlling a meeting, being the chair of the meeting, having the ability to, you know, to restrict comments, to limit comments, those type of things.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next is Chevelli.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm doing a brief overview on open meeting law as well as a little bit on Robert's Rules of Orders. I just want to preface this by letting you all know, this information is actually taken from an annual training that's required for all our boards and commission members. That's actually through our organizational development department, so we're happy to share that information to any member of the council that wants to see that presentation as well. But this will just kind of be a brief overview of that information. So, happy to go into more detail or answer any questions as well. So, open meeting law, and I apologize, that's a little small, but open meeting law, of course, it's, everyone's required to adhere to open meeting law if you sit on a public body, so that's you as mayor and council, as well of all of our board, commission and committee members. A committee is anyone who's designated either by vote of a council or appointed by the mayor to, for a certain purpose. A lot of that we'll see with advisory committees and task forces as well. It is Title 38 of the Arizona revised statute, so you can find more information there if you ever want to take a look. Public meetings really need to be held in the open and notices really have to have as much information as necessary to inform the public of what is being discussed by their public bodies. It's reasonable, necessary information. And then, of course, all legal action needs to be taken in a public meeting, so you'll see that that's why we cannot take any legal action in our executive sessions. A quorum, we hear that every time we have a meeting. A quorum is the majority of a public body present. A major, a quorum does need to be present for a public body to meet. You see violations of open meeting law whenever there is a quorum of a public body meeting without an agenda or, an agenda being noticed. And you also see this through communications, one-way communications, through reply all emails, serial meetings, or other ways that splintering a quorum occurs. So, there's multiple ways that council can form a consensus outside of a public meeting, so that's why they really refrain from having those discussions outside of public meetings such as this. Agendas and minutes, just talk briefly, you all are well aware of that. Agendas need to be posted within 24 hours of a meeting. We, here at the Town of Gilbert, try to get those out as soon as possible. I believe we get them out at least eight days in advance to allow council time to review the packets, as well as allow citizens the opportunity to take a look at that agenda. We do have addendums from time to time, so that will be posted within that 24-hour notice as well. The only exception, well, there's some exceptions. The greatest one that we see in municipalities is, in the case of an emergency, an agenda can be posted with less than 24 hours' notice. And statute actually explains when that would occur and how to go about that. Public bodies, of course, cannot disclose anything that's not an agenda, other than some of the items Chris laid out about responding to criticism from public comments, directing staff to look into an issue or putting something on a future agenda item. Minutes, of course, are the official record of public meetings. We actually retain those permanently, they're permanent records. We have them in the clerk's office. And so, we actually file those in a room and we preserve them permanently as well as have them microfilmed. And you're welcome to see any minutes at any point in time. We actually have them on our website as well. Statute, I didn't have this up there, but statute also says that a summary of action or a recording of a public meeting needs to be made available for inspection within three working days. Again, here at the Town of Gilbert, we at least get the draft minutes out within those three working days on our website, so everybody can have some opportunity to see what transpired during that public meeting. Executive sessions, executive session agendas must also be available within 24 hours prior to a meeting. And law only permits certain items to be discussed at an executive session. There are about nine items that are allowable. I don't have those written out for you today, but I'm sure Chris can memorize those from the top of his head. And then, executive session minutes are actually confidential by statute, so only certain members are, certain people are allowed to view those. So, members of the public body can view those. Employees that were part of a discussion, and really that refers to the employment item, you know, for employment contracts, somebody who was discussed during those conversations has an opportunity to look at those minutes. The audit general, if there's an audit, and then also the attorney general, if there's a violation or an alleged violation of open meeting law. And lastly, I'm sorry, no legal action, of course, is taken in executive session, executive sessions. Open meeting law violations, those should be reported to the clerk's office. The clerk will then reach out to the town attorney to investigate that. Of course, if necessary, it can result into a further investigation by our attorney general's office. If a violation occurred, the town actually cannot pay for that defense for an open meeting law violation. Conflict of interest, let's see. So, we do ask anyone who has a substantial interest or whose family member has one to report that as a conflict of interest with the clerk's office and refrain from any discussions or action on that item. We actually have a form in the clerk's office for anyone who needs to fill one out prior to a meeting, and we actually save that in a file in the clerk's office. So, we ask, when you're in doubt, just please disclose and identify that conflict of interest with, with our office. Public records are subject to inspection by Arizona open meeting, Arizona public record law, I apologize. All records requests are actually processed through the town clerk's office. We use a program called Just FOIA, so it's an easy way for the public to request information, staff to retrieve that information, and then release it to the public as efficiently as possible. All records that are produced or reproduced throughout the transaction of business is referred to as a public record, and that's regardless of format. So, we see that in emails, text messages, chats, really anything that's throughout the transaction of public business. There are some, as I mentioned, with executive session minutes, some records that are confidential by statute. And the town attorney does have some opportunity to also make the decision to not disclose something as a public record, but he is limited in those opportunities as well. Sometimes it's if there's a privacy interest or a burden of the town and some, some type of sensitivity in some of those records that are being requested. All records are reviewed and redacted prior to release to ensure that we are protecting all parties and protecting their personal information. And then, public records requests, like I mentioned previously, it's any format of record. So, we see that a lot with voicemails, emails especially, and then other ways of communication such as Teams chats and text messages as well. Gifts, this is a town policy on gifts. It's, it's, you must disclose in writing to the town clerk's office any gift, benefit or favor over $50 or a combined value of $50 within a six-month period. We actually created a document that we can provide to everybody, or at least get to Monica and Valerie to have, in case you all have any gifts that you receive that you like to disclose. We, again, print out that form and keep it in file in the clerk's office. You do not need to disclose anything if you've donated it to the town or a bona fide charity. Civility, we just like to remind everyone that they're expected to follow code of ethics, state law, and of course, town code while serving on a public body with the Town of Gilbert. There is a code of civility, it's Resolution 4026. I believe it was adopted, I think, in 2019. You might be receiving some more information on that, but we can always provide that form if anybody wants to look at that in its entirety as well. Quickly, Robert's Rules of Orders, a lot of this we've discussed in, through open meeting law, and Chris has mentioned it as well in his presentation. I apologize. Most of this, we already know, just in the way that we conduct meetings, but there needs to be official call to order by the chair. All actions should go by, go through the chair, however, the vice chair will take those over in their absence. There must be a quorum present, which we've already discussed, and then official action by the group would require both a motion and a vote. Any member can make a motion, but somebody must second that motion in order for it to go forward with the vote. And then, a majority of vote, a majority of the vote, I'm sorry, is needed for the item to pass. Once a motion is on the floor, the only topic that can be discussed is the motion on that item. Once the second is received, the chair will then call for a vote and the chair will announce the vote once, once everybody has put in their, their vote on that item. If there's no second, the motion dies and there's no action taken. However, of course, somebody can make an amended motion and the process will start over at that point. Of course, as mentioned previously, the only items on the agenda can be discussed. If a member has declared a conflict of interest, that member cannot take part of the discussion or motion. A member can call for a point of order to serve notice that discussion is headed away from the motion. So, sometimes, you'll see that when there's a lot of discussion, somebody will call for point of order to get everyone back on track. A member can call for a question when the discussion has continued without purpose. And really, this is just asking that a vote be taken without further discussion. And lastly, the chair should do a motion to adjourn a meeting, but it's not a requirement, so just a best practice. And I believe that was the end of my presentation. If anyone has questions, happy to answer, but as I mentioned earlier, happy to go in more depth into any section of this or provide that training for anyone that's interested.
Chevelli, the boards and commission members all have to take open meeting law every single year.
Yes, so they do take it annually.
And are the members of the council asked to take the open meeting law at any point in time?
They are not, and unfortunately, I don't have the history of why that was decided. I'm not able to answer that. It is, I think, a very beneficial presentation. Previously, it was actually done in person by Chris and his team. We've actually, over the years, worked really closely with our organizational development team, and now it's available electronically. It's about 24 minutes long total, and it's just a lot of really good information. So, we're happy to make that part of the, whether it's annual or just an onboarding process, happy to, to make that change and make it available to everybody.
Yeah, I would think maybe part of the future onboarding for council members, that that becomes something that is just a one-time deal. I even question that it needs, this was done by a council previous to me coming on council, that they said board members had to do it every single year, so as a board and commission member, I've taken it, I can't even tell you how many times. But, it would probably be beneficial as a one-time deal for new mayor and council members.
Absolutely. Happy to coordinate that, Mayor.
Thanks.
And Mayor, if I can clarify.
Mayor, I think the, I think the league also does an annual training that covers the same information.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Just to clarify for the boards and commissions, it's actually in the code that they have to do it annually, and that's why that's done that way. Doesn't apply to council.
I think that was updated in the code before you came on board, Chris, by the council, because I remember it not having to be annually, but I would do it, I think, once per my term as a commissioner, and then all of a sudden, it changed to annually, unless somebody caught it in the code and we hadn't been following that, which is possible too. Thank you.
I have a question about when discussion can occur with an item. Should it, currently, we, we usually discuss an item before the motion and second and the vote, but can it also be discussed after the motion and second, before the vote?
For, during a public meeting? So, typically, discussion is, is to be had before the motion is made, so that everyone can have that full scope of what the motion is referring to. Of course, once that motion's on the table, discussion should really end at that point according to Robert's Rules of Order, until that vote is taken, and then, depending on the outcome of that vote, additional discussion can be had if there's an amended vote.
Great, thank you. I have seen a motion and a second, and then somebody call for an amendment to the motion, and then we get carried away into quite a discussion, and it gets confusing at best sometimes with the amendments and then the second of the amendment and what the amendment means to the original motion. It does get very confusing at times. Definitely.
And at that point, Mayor, and I'm sorry, Chris, I know you were about to say something. At that point, the clerk is actually responsible for understanding what that original motion is, and they can always repeat it back if there is confusion on what that original motion was.
Mayor, I'd like that to be a, kind of a process, so that, once we go to an amended motion, I think we should stop and understand at that point what we're doing, because it does, I've been on that side, and it goes on forever and ever, and you're not even sure, I think even the person who makes it sometimes not sure what they did. So, if we could just take the time to just kind of reset that that's what we're doing, that'd be perfect.
Absolutely. Thanks. Thank you for that.
And I think, I might need a mic check here. I'm not sure.
Turn you up a little bit.
Yeah.
We'll look into that, council member took you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Sure, Scott.
Chevelli, it's good to see you without a mask on. It's been so long.
Thank you.
I kind of forgot what you looked like. So, my question has to do with creating a quorum outside of council. If, if an item or topic has not been agendaized, that's a word, Chris, is it possible still to create a quorum if council, if more than three council members discuss that item?
So, what really is going to be telling about a violation of open meeting law when it has to do with the quorum is if that item has been brought to council or there's potential for that item to be brought to council, whether for discussion or, or vote. So, it's a really sensitive area, because many of the, the items you would be discussing could potentially come to council in the future.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
If it, if it's a done deal and you've, and you've had the discussion, you can discuss it with people, but there's also the factor that we probably shouldn't see four of you, us, ever standing together discussing anything, because that gives the wrong impression. That's why they used to, after planning commission, the attorneys used to come out and watch us in the parking lot and make sure there weren't four of us standing together for the parking lot version of the meeting after the meeting. Amy?
Yeah, and Chris, you mentioned there were circumstances where four members of council are required to put something on an agenda or call a specific kind of meeting. Obviously, if it takes four people to do that kind of action, then you would, is that a violation of open meeting laws or is that an exception?
No, I, just when I was reviewing and preparing for this, it takes three council members to agendize an item, but in the code, it actually says, to call a council meeting, it takes four council members. That, a council, a regular council meeting outside of what's already been published in the calendar. So, that's the one exception, and it requires four for that.
I haven't seen that happen, but I would imagine that if there were four members that wanted to call a meeting for some reason, you could just go to the town manager or the town attorney and say, I would like to, and I know one other person, and then the other people would have to call in too, to do that, I would imagine, through town attorney or town manager.
Bridgette, I'd assume that we have the option to ask the mayor to call a council meeting, so this would be in the case that the mayor's refusing to have a council meeting, that's our action. Is that correct?
Yeah, I guess the sticky area is if council members want to bring an item onto the agenda, but you can't talk to a quorum, you better be pretty sure you're talking to the members who actually want to bring an item forward, so that's kind of.
And I think that's why they formed the, the form, that you can have two other people fill out for an item that you want to put on an agenda, so it makes it easier, keeps it simple, you write down what that item is, you ask two other people to sign it. Yep. Hopefully, there's not a coup being planned here.
You're welcome.
Can you hear me now? All right. So, just sticking with the roles and responsibility piece, or finishing up with that, I guess. So, the council manager form of government, another thing that you're all are familiar with at this point, so all Arizona cities and towns operate under council manager form of government. And I guess the easy way I describe it to people that maybe aren't real comfortable with local, or familiar with local government is sort of that to a board of directors of a corporation compared to the CEO of the corporation. And, you know, the difference of making those sort of high-level policy decisions compared to the day-to-day administrative, carrying those out and, you know, doing the duties necessary to, to meet those policy goals or policy, policy direction. So, obviously, you know, you as mayor and council are there as the policymaker, making the decisions related to the budget and adopting new ordinances and changes to ordinance and that sort of thing, whereas then the town manager and everyone operating underneath him or her really carries out those day-to-day administrative duties and, you know, the duties assigned related to the, the policy direction that you all implemented. Another question that I think sometimes needs clarification, especially among people that aren't familiar with local government, is sort of that representation piece. When, when do you, when are you a council member and when are you a regular human being? When are you an individual out there in the world? I think a general rule of thumb we always kind of talk about or go by is, you know, once something is, is adopted by council by action, if it's, it's a formal position of, of the council, so, you know, at that point, that, that can be, you know, if you're out there advocating for or against that position or discussing that issue, then, then you are absolutely, you know, operating on behalf of the town. Generally, you would want to kind of make that distinction otherwise, if it's something, you know, if you're out there on a position or an issue that, that is, hasn't been considered by the town, kind of making that distinction that, you know, that, that you are operating as, as an individual. The one key thing, obviously, where this really comes to light is, is elections and ballot issues and that sort of thing. So, as you all know, the, the town is prohibited from using any resources at all to advocate in any way for or against any kind of ballot issue that we, ballot measure that we have up on, on the ballot. You guys are a little bit, have a little bit more freedom there as, you know, you are individuals and have those rights and are kind of able to go out there and, you know, speak on behalf or against an issue or even a ballot, a local ballot measure. The only stipulation is, of course, that still applies with use of resources, so if you are out there doing anything at all that... So if you are out there doing anything at all, that there can't be any, anything town-related, any efforts, any costs, anything that the town put into it, if, you know, it's advocating for or against a measure. And along with the utilization of resources is obviously kind of the other side of that coin, and that's, you know, any resources that are provided by the town are really intended to be used for that purpose. So, so you're, you know, out there, there should be that line drawn where you're out there, you know, doing whatever to advocate, that if it's a personal effort, then it really shouldn't be utilizing town resources for that effort. So I talked a little bit about this. I mean, you know, with, with obviously, the significant transition we've had on council, one of our efforts was to make sure that we were both kind of doing what we can to make sure that you all do get up to speed, knowing that local government's kind of a different animal and not always easy to understand what your role and responsibility exactly is or specifically is. So what we had worked on making some updates to the orientation program prior to, prior to the transition that we had and prior to a lot of you coming on. But like we said, we got a lot of feedback from you all. One of the things that we did hear was wanting to hear, wanting to get more information on a, on a regular basis prior to things coming up or being like a high-profile issue among council. And that is kind of why we're here today. This is sort of the, well, this is the first of the study sessions. I know we've held one Tuesday a month for moving forward, where it'll be an opportunity for staff to, to come and do a little bit more of a regular update to some of those items that are going to be coming forward to council, or are going to be issues that you guys are going to be facing and discussing coming forward. Another thing that we want to do is seeing, you know, seeing the significant transition and seeing a lot of you coming on to council from, from other roles and, you know, trying to, trying to get that handle of exactly what the day-to-day job looks like. We look for opportunities where our team, as I think all of you know, mayor and council support staff is part of the IG team. So Monica and Valerie, who I know you all work closely with, are part of our team. And ways that we could kind of redefine how we operate in our little office there and how we might be able to provide support in some different ways as, as we kind of see that change over on council. And one of those, I know, well, first of all, talking about information coming up or issues coming up for discussion, one of those things that we can always do, if there's ever questions about anything, an issue coming up on an agenda or just anything going out on the community, we can always be that point of contact and help you, if you have answers that are directed towards another department or, you know, that we can help research for you, we can, we can always help you with any of those questions and can always be that quick, easy point of contact, so you don't have to figure out who else to reach out to. And then I know you're probably sick of me hearing, hearing from me about the, the whole constituent response process, but that was another example of a way that we thought with, with so many new faces on council, a way that we thought we might be able to provide a little bit more of that support. I know, you know, talking to you as you came on board, one of the things was, was kind of like, how do I manage all of these, you know, knowing that you all want to be sure and be as responsive as possible to your residents and make sure that they get the information they're requesting that you want to, but it's still also hard to know if somebody else already got the email, if it's been responded to, you know, all of those things, kind of tracking who even is the best person to answer those questions. So we've, we've told you guys and I've, you know, I've seen you all adopt this and start doing this more and more and appreciate that. But, you know, we're here to be that kind of point of contact and that, that support staff. So anytime, you know, you do get a email from a constituent or a phone call or whatever, please feel free to forward that to myself or Valerie or the other, Monica or also Amy in our office. And we will help kind of work with the correct department or departments, get, get all the information, make sure who else received the message, so that when a response goes out, it's on your behalf and, you know, so that you don't have to, so that you can be sure that, that the responses are going out and that the residents are getting information they need. But, but don't have to end up duplicating work or not knowing who else, who else already answered or responded or who else received it, and we can kind of track all that for you. It also helps on our end to be able to better track what, what is coming in from the community and what those issues are and what the volume is of those things that are coming in. And frankly, it's a good opportunity for, for our staff to be able to kind of develop and learn how town operates and who does what and get some of those answers as well. And one that, that I'm not going to give you the full details today, unfortunately, but for one, we're limited in time. But what, another question that comes up, not necessarily among new council, I think council members in general, it's sort of, you know, as you establish that role and become more comfortable, a lot of times it's, well, how do I sort of take that next step or become maybe more involved in community? Maybe this is a priority of mine. What do I do to be more involved in that particular area? So oftentimes, maybe you might have some ideas or concepts as far as a one-time program you want to throw together or some type of initiative that maybe focuses on a specific area of priority or need. So at this point, I would say, come to us, again, come to us as a point of contact, and we can help you kind of navigate that. I know we've always kind of said traditionally that the process is, is to get those additional requests from council and take it to council for a council vote. But I will say that we want to make it a little bit more refined than that, where we can offer up an opportunity to take on some of those things without having to take it to council for a full council vote, where if it's, you know, a nominal budget amount and we already have it in the office budget, and, you know, there's a moderate amount of staff time that, that our support staff can provide, that we maybe can, can, something that we can maybe just move forward and provide you that support as well. So I think that is all I had. And then Mayor, I think you had a document you were going to share with, with the council.
I do. I just wanted to see if anyone had any questions for you at this point. You've covered quite a few items there.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to add something to the role of the council. As you all know, the, the main role of council is to act in a legislative and sometimes a quasi-judicial role, depending on what items that you're voting on. And I just wanted to bring your attention a case, the litigation that the town was involved in a couple of years ago, and I pulled the minute entry from the court where the opposing council wanted to depose the mayor and council members as part of the litigation. And we had filed a motion for protective order saying it's improper, any information that the council had on that item that they wanted was done in executive session. And they were claiming that the privilege was waived because of a settlement of a prior case. So we were successful in that. So I just want to read a couple of things from the court case. I think it's something that's important for council members to keep in mind, that your role is legislative and quasi-judicial, depending on the issue. And that if you step outside of that role, you have the potential of, of being brought into litigation, being deposed as witnesses and the like. As long as you are within your role, you have privileges, you have immunities, and you're exempt from those type of things. And so here's what the court found in this. In looking at the council's decision, the judge said, hey, this action was legislative rather than administrative. And then he talks about how an act, when an act is legislative in nature, and it says, "An act is legislative in nature when it bears the hallmarks of traditional legislation by reflecting discretionary policymaking decisions that have prospective implications as distinguished from the application of existing policies." So that's kind of what the courts look at, is, hey, is this a policy decision? Or are you applying existing policies? Councilmember acts and they're applying existing policies, the court may look at that as saying, hey, you're acting in an administrative function, executive-type function, and we have the council manager set up. So the, the executive-type functions are run through Patrick. And that's where you could be accused of stepping outside of bounds and losing those privileges and immunities. So here's all, just a couple more things is, the, the judge said, look, settling that litigation was discretionary, was a discretionary policymaking decision, not just an application of existing policies. And the court went out and found that, it says, the Arizona case law is sparse, but what there is, makes it clear, the courts do not inquire into the motives of the legislature. So as long as you stay in that role and are acting in that policy, you're protected, you have immunities, you have privileges as a policymaking body, exempt from litigation, exempt from a lot of claims that you can make, even defamation claims, as long as you're acting in your role on the dais, courts give you broad, broad discretion, broad ability to act. So just want to bring that to your attention. Any questions about that?
Yeah, I do. Chris, could you give an example of maybe a function, administrative function that a council member might do that would be your example?
Yeah, so one example may be getting too involved with staff on a particular issue. If you start talking to maybe the other side or maybe staff members and directing staff members, something that ends up in litigation, you now potentially become a witness. If the other side knows that, hey, a council member was involved, then, and depending on what that direction was given, you may, you may by yourself, you know, the opportunity to be deposed or be called as a witness. So as long as you stay in a legislative role, you have complete protection. And clearly, I'm not saying you shouldn't talk to staff and shouldn't talk to Patrick. You need, you need to, you have to. But it's being careful about getting too involved in a particular item or giving direction that really needs to come, per our code, through Patrick to staff.
Thank you. It gets complicated and scary, even.
It does. It's not black and white. There's gray there.
That's an awful lot of things we're leaving to Patrick.
Why are you smiling when you say that, Councilman Anderson? Yes, I just want to say, if ever you're in doubt, just reach out to Chris or I, and we can make sure that we do things properly and according to our code. It is complicated.
It is. And the minute you start talking about having to be called in as a witness, it gets scary. Yeah, nobody wants that opportunity, right? I don't know. Thank you, Rob. Any other questions for Rob? Anything for Chris? Rob, can we get these slides sent to us? Because they were really hard to read. We couldn't read them on the screen, and this screen, they get distorted. So we couldn't read them on here either. Is that possible?
Absolutely. Mayor, yeah. We'll distribute this. Thank you.
Kathy, did you have something?
I just really had more comments than probably questions, but I think, Rob, you mentioned a little bit about touchpoints with the council. And I think one thing, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but because we are new, I think that those touchpoints going forward are going to be really important. And I think that they need to be really specific, so that we understand that is the next touchpoint. Sometimes I think what we receive is maybe a change order or a new contract that has to do with a larger topic, and we may not be realizing that what we're approving is the next step, perhaps. And so just a better clarification of maybe if there's major projects, when we're going to get those touchpoints and, so that we're all really clear. The, in the historic perspective, sometimes, I know that the town does a really great job, and I've watched it over the years, of being very consistent in the information that comes out in council communications. But I think because we are new, that history perspective, if there was a decision made prior, that that's outlined in the background just a little clearer, just so that, you know, I've seen a couple of things come forward, and it, it says it's a change order, but I didn't see the original, and so then I have to ask questions. So I think that's helpful. And then on the financial piece of the communications, there, most everybody does a real standard statement, but every once in a while, I'll get something a little different that I'm, then I have to call and say, is this really, has it been approved in the budget, hasn't it? And so just a little more consistency in that, I think, helps me not have to call staff and ask those questions. Rob, you and your team, I want to thank you on the emails, because I know when I first came on, that I wasn't sure if anybody on the council responded, or, and nobody on the council knew, because we can't copy each other. And so I really like this process and the fact that you send back the emails to us so that we know that it was answered, we know the information that was shared. And at that time, if we want to respond to that citizen again, or sometimes if, depending on what it is, I'll say, I forwarded on to staff and we'll be getting back to you. And I think that's very helpful, and so I appreciate that. So if we can go back to getting something on the agenda, because I know that just seems really confusing, and I appreciate Amy's point, because you really do kind of get into, did somebody, already talked to somebody? And I've been very nervous about, quite frankly, talking to anybody, because I don't want to make a mistake. So I might get a little more comfortable, but right now, I don't feel like it. But in some cases, if something came up that we had a conversation on the dais and we feel like maybe it needs to come back and it wasn't addressed at the council meeting, is the best process to reach out to Patrick and say, I really think we need to do that? And then you'll route it back through the mayor? And then if we need to get three, then is that when we need to get three people? I'm just not, I'm a little uncomfortable understanding that.
Mayor, Councilmember Tilke, generally, and this has just been my experience here, I bring things to the agenda that are staff-generated in nature. If there is something that is legislative in nature, or something that you've discussed at the council, historically, we've had those come back to us, either by three council members signing a sheet, requesting it to, a council member requesting a reconsideration, or the mayor bringing something back. But generally, I, I place things on the agenda that are coming from a staff perspective.
Okay, okay. I wasn't really thinking of reconsideration, just maybe something came up and we realized that maybe we have a new topic that may need to be, but the same applies, I'm sure. Okay.
And I've seen these sheets just get passed down the dais. So, you know, you fill one out and you just pass it down and see if anybody wants to sign it.
So I see them. That's all I know about them, is I see them. So we'll, we'll figure it out if I need a topic, but thank you. The other thing is that, you know, I appreciate the role between the CEO and the board, or in this case, the town manager and the council when it comes to employees. And I think that sometimes it's hard to remember that, you know, we only have five employees, the town council does, and that if something's happening within the employees and maybe something comes to us, that it's our role to let Patrick know that perhaps there is an issue within the employees and that he needs to address that, that it's not really our role to do that. And so I know that it becomes really uncomfortable if we're friends with people and they come to us, but I think that keeping that, those roles completely separate, that actually goes to what you were saying, Chris, about the, if you ever get called into something, right? If you've gone beyond your role. So I appreciate that. And I think that's it. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And the sheet that we just passed down for the council decorum and culture has the civility resolution at the bottom, so that you can all see it. And these are really the items that have come up when I did 101s with all of you, and I think some of your 101s actually with Monica too, so we worked together to make sure they were covered on this sheet. And please just feel free to review it. And if you have any questions, let me know. One of the big things when I came on council was never knowing what to wear to events. And I would text Jordan Ray and say, hey, what am I supposed to wear to this event? So feel free to text me. I've probably been to every event that there is to go to and probably know how to do that. And Jordan joked that I was his, he was my Jen, because he used to text Jen Daniels when he came on council. So it just keeps going, you know? But we also wanted to bring these study sessions forward, so that we would have an opportunity to talk about items like this, all as a group, so that you didn't all have to try and make time to have meetings with Rob and Monica and Valerie and Amy. And also, when we have big topics coming down the pike, that we can all sit together, and it will alleviate some of the meetings that you were having two and three on with staff. It cuts the meeting down for them, and it brings us all in the same room to hear all of the same questions, hear all of the same answers, and everybody can discuss it out at the same time. So we hope these study sessions will help in the future and answer some of those questions that you brought up, too, Kathy. Okay, next on the agenda. Rob, thank you.
It's Dana Birchman, Chief Digital Officer. I wasn't sure, Patrick, if you were going to say anything before me, but I will go ahead. If you can hear me, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm going to share my screen with you and do a brief presentation. I know we don't have a lot of time, so I'll try to talk quickly, which is something I'm good at. Before we start, I wanted to mention, I know there's been a lot of discussion around the logo and monogram. the logo and monogram, and I'd like to reframe the conversation to look at this today from a larger view as a brand launch that is much bigger and more complex than an individual monogram or logo. So I'd love to illustrate today the amount of work that's obviously been put into this so far, how the implementation of this brand is starting to take shape, and how it's implemented and impacting future projects. So as you know, this began as a centennial project, and a project like this doesn't happen overnight. It happened over two and a half years, with input from the community, feedback from business leaders, focus groups, a statistically valid survey, working with a reputable brand agency, using an industry standard image and design process, and understanding that this is a complicated undertaking. Obviously, when a community like ours is often divided about how it sees itself, whether it's as a town or a city, growing up or holding on to where we came from. And at the end of the day, knowing that we can't please everyone, we did our very best to take this all into consideration, to create a brand that would sell Gilbert to people who have never heard of it before, outside Arizona nationally, and also be something that the community can rally around. So here's where we're at today. After your approval on December 15th, we went to work to finalize the branding elements. We launched the branding resources to the organization on February 1st, so just over a month ago. So staff has had access to these brand elements for over a month and is moving forward with implementation. My team has oversight over the larger projects, which I'll mention in a moment, but many departments are already ordering items and using this brand. As I mentioned, this is much more than a logo, and on this internal page which you're seeing, staff can find resources, including a brand guide, brand standards, assets, fonts, color palettes, imagery, and other helpful links and resources. I'd also like to show you the website. The new website is ready to launch. We had completed it to launch in November, around Gilbert days, but the changes to the monogram and the colors did delay this project an additional three months, but it is now complete. And for the first time, economic development will be under our brand as well, and their website is also close to completion. So you'll see the two homepages here displayed. Here are some other examples of projects that have been implemented or are ready to implement that have the new branding. You'll see the Heritage District Rideshare Project. They are waiting on us to move forward using the new branding. The Public Safety Training Facility already has the new fonts on the outside of the building, and will have the logo inside. Also, the streets teams have been holding off on ordering new street signs, some more than a year, and are ready to move forward with the signage. The people team is waiting to order new badges for employees, and obviously, any marketing materials that go out must include our branding. So again, this is just one example in the center here of how many of the departments are already incorporating the brand, both digitally and in print. And since we no longer have separate brands across the organization, the people team is obviously anxious for collateral items for employees, and so are we all for the town store and other uses. Again, these are all examples of implementation of the brand that are already underway. Also, we've incorporated the new branding into our videos, so it's out and being viewed by the public. Here's a recent clip from a video on the new Public Safety Training Facility, so you can get a sense of how we're using the tagline, again, about the full picture of the brand, along with the other elements, especially when it comes to storytelling.
Gilbert's Public Safety Training Facility is helping shape a new tomorrow today.
So these are just some examples of projects that include both physical and digital brand assets, and as you can see, it touches everything that the organization is already doing. Like I said, these are just, this is just a list of other items that are in progress. So I wanted to mention to you, too, also, a few implications of further delays. There's obviously no way to truly calculate the value or the cost of the amount of time, staff time, not just for my team, but obviously across the organization and beyond. It has been put into this project over the past two and a half years, and as old logos are being phased out, any additional changes would create brand confusion potentially. And also, more delays on this project greatly does inhibit my team's ability to do their jobs and promote and market Gilbert locally and nationally. So here are some of the projects that are in progress or already planned, and without the marketing and the branding, we're unable to effectively focus on these projects and getting the information that we need to residents and to others. So some of these projects incorporate the new branding, and some of these were delayed because we were there waiting for the new brand, and they're definitely piling up and need my team's full attention to be sure that they're seen through successfully. And these are also great touch points and opportunities for us to share the new brand with everyone else. So to wrap things up quickly, our residents, obviously we know, are actively engaged and passionate about issues that matter, and we love that. And this brand is really just a mechanism for us to share information related to issues, tell meaningful stories. And we know, obviously, that we won't always be able to please everyone, but we really did do our best to take all of the feedback that we received into consideration. There were unforeseen circumstances that delayed and complicated the launch of this project, and so many other things in 2020, but we do really look forward to moving forward to continue to implement this brand in the organization and in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I was the one who asked to bring this back, because I've been asking for like two months to be able to bring this back, before things were able to get a lot further than they were, and I kept kind of getting stonewalled, I thought. And the reaction from people that I have been getting and around the community, and from business owners, from residents, from employees, from other elected officials, current elected officials, past elected officials, that have come to me and asked what I was going to do about this brand, what I was going to do about this logo. And I kept telling them that I didn't think there was anything that I could do, but I at least wanted the opportunity to have my say. I have never felt so passionately about something that I would go this far to bring it back, to have a discussion like this, ever. I have pretty much been a team player here from day one, and whenever I had an issue with anything that staff brought forward, anything that I had a discussion about, I would take two staff to discuss with them. I didn't have an opportunity to do that with this branding and logo. But now I'm the one that has to be the one to tell people that we're stuck with it. And they're all coming to me. And I agree with them. I don't agree that this was the best move for our community, and I wanted to be able to have that discussion. I, this logo, I don't, in my opinion, doesn't fit this community, and the comments that I am getting from people are just, you would be amazed at the comments that I'm getting from people. Someone in a nearby community said, it's about time Gilbert screwed up something so bad to make the rest of us look good. And I, how am I supposed to respond to those comments? And especially when I don't agree with what we have. So I wanted the opportunity to say it. I wanted the opportunity to speak my mind. I am, I'm, it devastates me that we have employees that are embarrassed to put this on their uniforms. It embarrasses me. It embarrasses me every time I see it on a screen, and somebody texts me and says, oh, look, Pac-Man's eating Mesa. Oh, look, Pac-Man's eating Glendale, on the next screen. It's, it's not what I envisioned for this community, and I am, I, I just had to have my say. I was hoping that we could put it on hold and just go back to our old logo that's currently in place, without having to spend the time and money this year on this, and not have to move forward with this item. And I have had, like I said, hundreds of people come to me in many different ways at this point to ask me about this. Patrick did everything in his power to get me to not bring it forward this evening, but I had to have my say.
Can I respond?
Please. Sorry, I wasn't looking your way.
This isn't my first rodeo with doing logos in this town. And I can tell you right now, our current logo was not accepted by this community until six months to a year after we implemented that. And my guess is, if we went back to the old logo, we'd get more criticism for using that again. I'm done. We made a decision, and I'm done. And we need to give the community, those who are naysayers about this logo, the opportunity to get used to it. That's what it takes. Anytime we have a rebrand, a logo like this, we have to get used to it, and it will happen. We have much greater issues to go after right now than we do this logo. And I'd encourage us to move on down the road with this.
I absolutely agree that we have bigger issues, and every place I go, this is the first thing that everybody wants to talk to me about. So that's why I have brought it back, because of that factor. I was in this room when that, with the swirl logo was presented many, many years ago, and I was here for the reaction, and I know that it did not go over well, and it was kind of put on a back shelf and really not used very much for many years, and finally was, started being used about, you know, thoroughly, like six to eight years ago, by many, many people. And so that concerns me. And I keep hearing that people will come on board and like this one, but to me, it doesn't speak to our community, and I'm disappointed, and I'm embarrassed. And I had to be able to have my say.
Mayor, thank you for sharing your thoughts, and I know it's important that you, you do share those and that you get them off your chest. And I happen to like the logo. It took me a little while to warm up to it. I didn't see what other people saw. And when I did see what looks like a person, I actually like it, because we are about people, and we're about caring people. And I am concerned, maybe that's not the right word, whenever you look at a piece of art, a logo, or whatever it is, and you have a reaction, you know, it's up to that individual to look at it and see the positive. I see the positive as being people-oriented and caring about people, where other people may look at it and see something negative about having that, something that looks like a person, or a Pac-Man, or whatever they think. But I think I might, in that case, ask them to look at where their mindset is in life and as they think about Gilbert, because it's not about that logo then. I think that maybe they're not looking at the Gilbert that I see. You're our mayor, and I think that you have to be able to be proud of what we're doing, and this is a big issue for you, and I understand that. But I think you, you may have to change your mindset on it and be able to tell people the positive things of what it's representing, or else this is going to be a hard four years for you as you move forward. And so I, I hope that somehow we can help you get there, because you are the spokesperson for us. And if you can't have a good answer, then that, that reflects worse on the town of Gilbert than some smart aleck comment coming from somebody else. And so I hope that you'll allow us to help you better, like the logo and where we're going.
That's, that's a very good point that Kathy's bringing up about. Many people, I think, in the community don't understand that it, there's a representation in that logo. The old one, you remember the old one, those swooshes all meant something. And I know the people in the community didn't know that that's what we were thinking of. And it's the same way with this one, is that artwork represents something. Maybe everybody doesn't understand what that is. Maybe it's our job to better educate the public about what that is.
That would be a great place to start, because I have no idea what it is. It doesn't speak to anyone that I've spoken to, and I've watched all of your presentations. I was online for the first one. I was here in the chamber for the second one, and I've watched every video since that I could find about this. And I don't see anything that tells me what this is supposed to be, except the first one with the crop circles from the agricultural land that wasn't in Gilbert, and then the color scheme from the sunsets, but the picture that was used was not a sunset, it was a sunrise. I keep seeing all of these things that don't equate to what I'm being told about this fabulous representation of this community, that I think we live in the best town in the United States, or I wouldn't have run for mayor. Lauren?
I was on the council when we voted for this, and I've, I've only been on the council a short time. I, if there's a 6-1 vote, I'm the one. If there's a 5-2 vote, I'm in the two. If there's a 4-3, I'm in the three. I don't think I've ever been on the prevailing side of any split vote. And I apologize, Mayor, but I support your view, and I agree with you completely. This logo does nothing for me.
Thanks, Lauren. We don't often always agree, but it seems to be getting a little bit more. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mayor, I have a comment.
Thanks, Scott.
So when the, when this logo was originally presented, the, I didn't, I didn't appreciate it. I didn't appreciate the shape and the color palette. I also didn't appreciate the process, how, how it was presented without a lot of transparency during the process. But we had a subcommittee organized. Changes were made to the logo, to the shape, the color palette, and, and I like the logo now. It's growing on me. I think, changing the logo, we could be here in six months, having the same conversation about the people who don't like whatever the new logo is when that decision is made. The part that I'm not okay with with the logo is, I'm not okay with, I've heard a lot from the men and women in uniform, in police and fire, that would not be proud to wear this logo on a patch, on their uniform, and that's where I have a problem. I want those men and women who risked their lives for us to be proud of the uniform that they put on, the uniform that we asked them to put on. And so I would, I would entertain an idea, a motion, or, it's not a motion right now, but I would, I would entertain the idea of creating a separate logo for the patch that would be worn on those uniforms, and perhaps even on those vehicles, so that the people who have to wear those patches and drive those vehicles can do that with a sense of pride and a logo that, that is more easily recognizable by the people here in Gilbert as Gilbert, and what makes us Gilbert, and whether it's the water tower, or the grain silos, or what have you, just something that represents us, so that the people who have the exposure to our community have that patch on their arm that says Gilbert. I think it's okay to have an outward-facing logo. I think this new logo is hip and cool, and our economic development team likes it. And our economic development team is one of only 65 economic development departments in the nation that are accredited by a national economic, national group. So I trust them when they say, this is a really good logo for us to promote Gilbert outside of Gilbert. So I'm fine with that. But I would entertain something for, for police and fire to have on their uniforms that would be different.
Thank you, and I, I agree with you that their patches should be their own. I think that public safety should have full say over their patches, that we should not be involved in that, other than a nod at the end to make sure that it's not anything that we, you know, completely disagree with or find disrespectful in any way. I was really not pleased when I saw the design for the police patches and what was done to theirs. I haven't seen anything for a design for fire yet. Then it, it just, it does separate police and fire from everybody else, and we try to treat our employees all the same, but that would be a step in the right direction from my perspective. Any other comments? We have another meeting to go to upstairs, so.
Patrick, do you have any comments?
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, thank you. I appreciate the discussion, and we don't need to rehash everything that's just been said. We do have a number of things that, that I've pressed paused on that are continuing to build up now, and we really have to move on. If it's the desire of the council in regards to the public safety patches, I think I'd indicated that we would be fine in, in moving forward in that direction. But we really do need to move on, and I will say that we endeavored very hard to gather input and to come up with something that would represent this community, and, and everyone in this community, that they could see them. see themselves in and no one would feel excluded by, by something that they may not resonate with them personally. And that these rebranding efforts are always challenging and always difficult. This is my third one and, and I had joked at the time that I hope it's my last one. And I sincerely mean that. There are so many other challenging things I'd rather experience than going through another rebrand opportunity. They are just very challenging. As, as we have seen from other cities around this region and ASU, when they changed out Sparky, they just are, are very challenging undertakings. But I do believe that the staff put in an exorbitant amount of energy and effort into this to try to come up with something, to take all of that feedback and, and all of those interests we have and, and something that we can get behind.
And you don't even hear much about Sparky anymore. It's all the fork.
Right. Right.
There's nothing good I can say, just nothing. We will go ahead and adjourn this study session and reconvene upstairs for a subcommittee meeting, quick subcommittee meeting.